All right, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I will open up the February second meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. It's about five minutes after seven. Um, on our, uh, this meeting is being recorded, um, on Zoom tonight, uh, so everyone knows. Um, on our agenda tonight, we have a discussion and review of our, um, potential, um, flexible development bylaw, uh, with us tonight. We've got a few developers, Tom Ford, Dave Tragerth, and Peter Gordo. Um, they've, they will hopefully provide us some great feedback tonight. Um, Peter's already provided a couple of things in an email. Um, we also will be potentially talking about a zoning map, uh, or zoning, uh, area change to the, uh, business district as we've been talking about the last couple of meetings. And then we'll look at, uh, other board business, uh, review minutes and so forth. So, uh, as, as many of you know, um, we've been working on this, uh, potential, yes.
Going to call a meeting to order.
Right. Oh, right. I gotta take a roll call. Sorry about that. Um, so yeah, I need to identify all the members that are here tonight. Just please say, uh, I when you're called, uh, Marnie.
Marnie Crouch, hi.
Rick.
Rick Mitchell, hi.
Uh, Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, hi.
Corey.
Corey Boy, you, hi.
Uh, Dan.
Dan Hamer.
Richard.
Richard Boroff, hi.
Great. And Brian Stein is here as well. Um, thanks, Rick. So, uh, for quite a number of meetings, we've, we've been putting together and talking about, uh, this potential bylaw change. We've modeled it a little bit after Wenham's flexible bylaw, um, as well as others and Patrick and Marnie and others has spent a fair amount of time, you know, along with Bill and Rick, um, putting this together, uh, the verbiage and the matrix and so forth. We are, you know, this would be a potential replacement for our current OSFPD bylaw, which I know Tom is somewhat familiar with. Um, and it's never been used in the fifteen or so twenty years that it's been around. So, um, you know, based on comments from Tom and others, we started looking at this flexible bylaw to, you know, essentially be more flexible on how we are looking at development in various areas and what, what can the board do to, um, you know, use our few remaining, you know, areas of town that aren't protected, um, to their best use while also being, um, you know, concerned and taking into account our, the character of our town, right? So how, how to, how to do all that with one bylaws, what we've been kind of wrestling with the last number of meetings. You know, trying to give developers flexibility while allowing the town obviously some control. And, um, you know, again, keeping our, the character of our town intact, um, with any potential development. So Patrick has sent out, um, our draft bylaw and density matrix to a number of developers, a few of, a few of whom are with us tonight. Um, again, Tom Ford, Peter Gordo, and Dave Tragerth, um, for comment. So did I miss anything, Patrick?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head.
Great. Um, trying to think the best way to do this tonight. Um, maybe we just go kind of one by one and, um, just get general feedback. And I'm sure you'll probably have some of the same feedback in certain instances, but we would love to hear, you know, honest criticism of our bylaw and, you know, um, obviously praise as well, if there is any. But, uh, you know, we, we really want something that's going to work, um, for everyone. So we, I'd love feedback around your general thoughts on this type of bylaw. You know, the, the density that can be provided here and then obviously other, um, items as well as you see fit. So I don't know who wants to go first.
Quick question, Brian.
Sure.
Um, I, I don't know, Patrick, did you, uh, send a list of questions that we had, uh, discussed to the developers?
Yeah, I did.
All right.
Good. So, um, we might use those as a format and then could feel free to deviate from this. Um, but I just figured it would help in my.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
You know, i- i- if I could, I want to begin with the praise thing because I didn't focus too much on the, uh, considerations, but rather on the bylaw itself. And I want to say I really admired the board for taking this on. I've been a critic of OSFPD from before it was enacted. And this is a, a pretty good step in the right direction. But I have some administrative things and if you let me go, I'll go fast.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Well, the first one I have is, uh, A12. When you limit the, uh, use of this bylaw to what it, what actually it says is eighty thousand square feet. I think you effectively preclude, and I reserve the right to be wrong on this, any development in the tightest, you know, twenty thousand foot, district because in my look, when I exclude the wetlands and the publicly owned land, your bylaw specifically says there's no assemblages. Um, and I don't think this is a possible that qualifies. And if I was thinking, organically city planning wise, I would have thought that you'd be anxious to see some density in the downtown. And on the smaller lots, it clearly comes out later in your matrix and that you have a, a desire to see units in the fifteen hundred square foot range. I don't believe those will happen in the eighty thousand foot zone. The economics won't make sense. But they should be in the downtown. I, I, I didn't understand why you wanted to limit it eighty thousand square feet, particularly in that one zone. And I didn't understand why the May fifth, two thousand and eight date has any, any merit or where that came from, but such an exacting date.
I think that came from, um, senior housing bylaw, didn't it, Marnie?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, it did. Um, but it's a relic of, uh, past and a lot of the, um, language, uh, came from other bylaws and some of that are relics of past bylaws. So, um, they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily, um, oh, what do I want to say? Um, baked into concrete on this, we're, we're, we can make changes. We're really in the drafting stages and we're really looking for people to, direct and, uh, feedback about what look like it won't work and what will.
Well, that, that's an excellent point because when we pulled language from the senior housing bylaw, we didn't necessarily give, you know, thought, specific thought to that particular sentence. But you just pointed it out. So why is it in there? What's the justification for it? I mean, that's an excellent point and something that we really need to rethink and whether that entire sentence should be amended or eliminated.
If I were to say, you know, having read your, you know, purpose, uh, for the bylaw change, I don't see how an assemblage, particularly an assemblage in that tight little zone, hurts. I think it works in favor of all of those things because it gives it, whoever the developer is, or the two neighbors that come together or whatever, gives them options that might not currently exist. And I think the eighty thousand square foot criteria, if you're in the RA zone, you're automatically granted an extra lot. Um, uh, you, you, if you're, if you're as upright lot, you have eighty thousand feet. And you're automatically, your, your density just doubled. But if you're in the tight little density downtown, uh, you have, you have nothing. And you don't even have the ability to, to try to create this fifteen hundred square foot house.
So what you're advocating or suggesting is, um, you need larger lots to get the kind of density to make it economic.
No, no, I never saw it. I never saw it.
Hold on, Bill. I'd like an answer to my question.
I would say that this bylaw, like the OSFPD law, bylaw, might apply to, one, I think it applies to zero lots in the twenty thousand foot, you know, downtown district. And I'm sure that wasn't your intention. But when you preclude, uh, you know, assemblages, there are no lots that are privately owned that I could find that hit eighty thousand feet in that district.
Well, um, now I'm a little confused because the RA, the way it's written and the way I understand it, that only applies in the RA district, which is a minimum eighty thousand square foot lot.
I don't believe that's the, I don't believe that's the case, Rick, although I reserve the right to have read it wrong, but on the density.
Me too.
On the density table, it says, it says the minimum size lot on all three zoning districts is eighty thousand and you can't.
Dave Tragworth is saying he agrees with, shaking his head that he agrees with you.
Well, that certainly wasn't the intent. Cause, uh, cause we discussed about having R1A, R1B and RA as the eligible zoning districts. And, um, and then us, and then, um, you using the matrix to determine the level of density that could be within each of those zones wasn't, um, intended that a, a minimum, um, lot size had to be eighty square thousand feet in each of the, um, zoning districts.
Oh, Rick, I, I think I might have to, um, disagree with you, uh, respectfully, but I think that we did discuss that we wanted to have a minimum lot size of eighty thousand square feet. Primarily because we were looking at, you know, I think, uh, an increased density. So I mean, if you, you know, for two acres and eight or ten or fifteen units or whatever you're contemplating, it, it does make sense to have a larger parcel.
But does that mean larger parcel per domicile or a larger parcel that can be developed into multiple domiciles?
The latter.
Okay, because it.
I mean, if that's not everyone's understanding, that was my understanding.
All right, that, that's a, that's a good clarification. I, I'm glad, uh, Tom, you pointed that out. Um, because it sort of, if you think about Willow Street, there are, um, eighteen units on an acre. Um, and based on the text that you're using and looking at, that would have precluded that from happening.
But Rick, you'll, you'll, you'll agree with me on this. If you're in the eighty thousand foot, uh, zoning district.
RA.
RA, thank you. Um, by this proposed amendment, you automatically sort of get a second lot by my scorekeeping and all the people in downtown district, whether they, they're all precluded from playing.
Got it. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the way this reads, you're right. You know, I don't, I don't think that was our intention.
I don't think it was either. Yeah.
Well, that's.
Well, I, I, and I wanna, I wanna just suggest to you that if your real objectives are the first four or five, um, there is nothing wrong with an assemblage. You, you've retained discretion here. And if you're looking for thoughtful planning or maybe townhouses or a perimeter that's, you know, open space or something, an assemblage doesn't hurt that. It gives the landowners the opportunity to do the right, opportunity to do something a little more adventurous than twenty thousand square lots.
But I, I think that's an important point about the minimum lot size being eighty thousand square feet because you're right in the RA, it wouldn't work. So that, that's something we have to go back and look at. And then the assemblage is another key point. What else you got?
The, the, the references to the acre thing in particular in the, uh, in the, uh, table are wrong. Um, I think you should go with forty thousand, twenty, eighty thousand an acre. And you have all of the, um, uh, I don't know, uh, additions based on acre. I, I just think, I think it might be just nomenclature, but really forty, eighty thousand square feet and not reference the acreage.
Okay, good.
And then unless someone can correct me on this, but I've never seen it. I don't believe its own unique energy water efficiency guideline. Am I wrong in that, Peter? Or I might be wrong in that.
No, I, I, I had the same comment. I think it needs some definition as to what you're measuring. What's the, well, be, you know, existing code, what year it changes frequently. Um, I, I think, I think that, I think that reference deserves some more careful.
I started a little bit of research. Uh, I did inquire with our building inspector. Uh, he does tell me that, uh, you know, yes, we work with these ratings, those kinds of things. Uh, you know, there's another level here too. Um, we're part of the green communities here in Massachusetts and specifications our requirements are, but it may, it may give us something worthwhile as sort of a yardstick to work with. Uh, I know, yeah, criteria that we might hang our hats on.
I think you're going to, I think you're going to, you, you may want to attempt to measure, you know, our practice once and see whether or not you can actually measure ten percent different than whatever it is you're measuring against. I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
It, California has a sta- a one percent more stringent than the federal water use standards for fixtures. So that's one thing I mentioned to Patrick that you could go off of. But, you know, again, how, how you track that in the future and what, how the changes work.
Were you, were you thinking of that, Brian, in terms of, of requiring the same standard?
Well, to get, to get this water efficiency, you know, percentage, you know, that, um, so we were, we were assuming that it was something above existing code, but what, but what is that?
I need to clarify that.
Yeah.
And this.
I, I wanna, I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but if you let me do one more, I'll stop for a long time. Number five, I admit to not understanding that. And coupled with that, I don't understand how offsite, uh, the development team comes up with. I don't understand how that's factored in. I don't know whether that's a, a swap or I, I thought what you were trying to do and it makes more sense than a little perimeter buffer, so to speak. But I, I can't quite see how that works in this and that maybe it's just me not understanding.
Means that the land that would be acquired with monies from this fund is not on the development site. It's, it can be, make sense. Yeah, Tom, actually, when we started, uh, with this discussion, uh, it wa- it came from a comment that you, you know, quite some time ago, where you made the suggestion for us to consider the fact that, you know, for Hamilton to accept, people are going to be expecting open space as an offset to that. So, you know, we mowed on that for a while. And about the idea of working with, there's a structure that the Board of Selectmen created here a, a few years ago, where there's also a committee at that time that set that up. And that group is the body that, uh, ostensibly is that the town could pursue for acquisition. That our approach here was in supportive, uh, that would allow that committee to then purchase land that we may find, they, that committee may find, uh, and have purposes for the town. So that's a bit of the background and correct me if, if any of the board members recall something different.
I think I had a bit of the all open is not created equal. And there are places that we should go after views and vistas and, and oplens that are worthwhile, but what I couldn't quite for open space, and I assume that was open space left on site, where that runs sort of a little bit contrary to the, let's do open space somewhere. In the last column, the win number, if you will, the, the money's paid to the town. Is that earmarked for the open space, uh, acquisition?
Space that occurs on the development site. It's just one of many ways of getting a little more bonus. Okay, but you do have to pay for your, by making them smaller, setting aside open spaces or just even just participating in this particular zoning ordinance. You have to pay for those extra units.
I like the fact that you kind of capped it both in a single year and in total and see how it works. Uh, there was a lot in this bylaw that made sense. There were a couple of things that I think with, with a payment of, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars, you immediately have two lots. That's a pretty good.
And that's, that's, you, you think being overly generous?
Yes.
Why do you think that's overly generous, Tom?
Well, uh, uh, a second house lot in an RA zone sells for something between three fifty and four fifty, your side lot of, of front yard things, anybody, you know, if I saw this bylaw coming, I wouldn't should buy two houses or three houses in that district and get six lots. And everybody thought that was a little tight. So we backed off to fifty. You're telling us we should have started at two fifty or?
Well, I think of this, right? You, you, you're doubling, you're doubling the density in two of the, two of the zones, right? And you're paying X amount of money versus then paying down the road for other things.
Beyond financials, so that it's all financed. If there's front environments, a lot of environments might prevent some of those things.
Thank you.
It's not just about the money, I guess.
And, and you know, when I have a private drive and it's not here, you know, it's driveway and, and all the side lot setbacks and all the rest are, uh, are not addressed.
You like it better the way it is.
I, I don't think you're in the, if you're in the, uh, RA district, you should on its face seated with people that think they just found a three hundred thousand dollar lot for the sake of fifty thousand. I think the RA district, the minimum lot size, I think should be four.
Saying, oh, thank you.
Okay, so how about?
I was gonna, a couple of thoughts. Um, first, I, uh, when I read the eighty thousand, what I thought was eighty thousand minimum for more of an urban infill background and not a, you know, so I think of an eighty thousand lot. I, I don't think I've ever developed on an eighty thousand foot lot. What sort of single family lots go for and that kind of stuff. I am coming, um, so I'm coming at this kind of from a more urban infill type of perspective, some of the density downtown. This, this again, to me, the whole thing kind of speaks to more greenfield development, um, trying to do. And, um, so that's one thing. I think, um, you know, one thing I was interested, maybe this is just known around, I get the permit or when I, when I build a building, like, when do I owe? I've got a ten acre lot and I owe six hundred grand and do I owe that six hundred grand?
That's a good find.
It's a cash flow question, right? From a developer perspective.
Sure.
Uh, and I had is like you count the units when they're permitted against your quota. But, you know, if you, like, for example, the city of Boston, um, but, um, so when do you owe the money, right, is a question. If, so if I'm, you know, I gotta pay you six hundred grand.
Why would you, why is it in Boston, fifty percent of the points are, are never proceeded with? Why, why does that happen?
Sort of proceed forward with permits that, you know, may not be as skilled. I don't know if it happens in Hamilton. Um, they kind of don't know what they're doing. Um, there's also a change in.
So, Dave, if, as a, speaking as a developer, when, uh, would you, uh, suggest those dollars be due?
Developer, uh, you know, and I think that's when you want the units to count. I mean, I, I understand that you may then run over your cap accidentally, right? And you don't want to have people running out and permitting stuff and never actually building.
And reselling them. That, that might be something that really happened, that sell off the land for more money because it's got the permit. You don't, you're kind of losing control a little bit when you do that. Whereas if you, if you require it at the point of grant.
Losing control.
You might.
Developers may have different objectives in how they arrange things and how they design.
But then they have to get a new permit.
Yeah, they couldn't do that under a special, like what we did with Willow Street and everybody on this board, I think, participated in that. We had a, we had a design. We went through site review. It got approved, but, um, Tragworth Companies was constrained by the conditions of that. So, and I think to, could really, suddenly they all happen and you exceed your fifty. Um, so I, I think either we need to go back and read the language or write the instruction, something like that.
Well, what, what you would have, the, the issue you'd have is you'd have developers sort of eyeing the pipeline, right? And so, um, and, and so, you know, it's not a big deal, but if you do cap it at actual building permit pulling, you don't have as much control over that moment, right? So I, I don't know what the, the percentages of projects that are permitted that, that don't happen in Hamilton. It might be.
I don't know of any that is too much for developer to, uh, you know, walk away from. I, I don't remember in my eighteen years on the board that ever happened.
Because he wouldn't bother taking out the permit if it's that expensive until he has all the assets in place to continue with whatever project he was going to do.
I've heard of the investment, so I think that, you know, the, the perfect, you know, application of the timing.
Yeah, that's not what we did on, um, you know, for the senior housing, right? When they had their inclusionary's units, you know, on that money, do we, we set a.
Tied to construction.
It was tied to construction, correct.
It might just dissuade some people. I mean, people have deeper pockets and can pay it. You know, it might dissuade people from using this. Um, if I've got to put out six figures at special permit, um, I don't know.
Financable money at that point, you know.
Yeah, that's true.
The permits are there, there's a jump up in the, in the value of the land and it's very easy to back it.
I mean, the simple solution is unless otherwise agreed, inviting between, you know, the planning board and the developer, the fee is checked to an agreement. I don't know if anyone's thoughts on that, but it's, it's the little carve out, you know, that, that can be used if necessary.
For gets an application and they don't remember this, weren't parties to this conversation. So to the degree that we can be specific and so that there's that flexibility that I think you're looking for. But there's some guidelines to future board members.
Cause I was just gonna say, what's the downside to waiting for the permit? It's certainly, it's when, it's when the builder, you know, is gonna have his financing and I, I don't see that it's a hard.
Um, a couple of thoughts. Now that you guys have clarified, it's downtown eight point one six. You know, I think ground floor, did you, would, you know, with its ground floor?
Could I just interject here? Because I had an opportunity to look at this housing choice law. Has that mandates a zone within a half a mile of a computer rail station? And if the town doesn't, uh, adopt a bylaw, address the town. So in terms of the business district and the Willow Street Overway District, you know, I think we actually have to, as a planning board, consider whether we're to, you know, abide by the mandate that's in this law, which it, and I, and I was.
Well, we, we may already, I don't know, Patrick, I don't know if the town.
I think that you could build a case that we already comply.
Right.
Right, right. And, and that would include the, uh, winter school property too, as part of that, to make for some, uh, much greater level of opportunity.
I'll mix use and multi-unit downtown.
Okay, thank you.
So the unit is defined as, as three or more though, not two or more.
Yeah. I mean, you could potentially point to this if you pass this as, as meeting, meeting that threshold. I think there will be, you know, it's open to interpretation among the regulators, right? Um, and nobody knows yet. Um, but, um, I, I, my sense is you guys would be covered, but, you know, especially if you pass this. So I think, um, just a couple of other quick things and then, um, I'll pass it on. Um, I would just say that the, the formulas underneath the table could just use some more descriptors of, you know, just all numbers, you know, five times, two times, one plus, I, I would just add some, which would be helpful, um, because I, I was trying to do it myself and, you know, I didn't spend as much time as I would honestly, if I was really looking at a deal. But, um, it could definitely be written a little clearer. Um, and then what was I gonna say? So we talked about, I have one more thought. Oh, I just water usage. I just don't know how, it, it seems like you guys are already on it. I don't know how. Everybody's gonna use that one. And, you know, um, so that's one thing. And then the other thing is if you do, let's just, something that would be interesting is do you have remedies if somebody doesn't do what they said they were gonna do? Um, and read their homework, which happened all the time, right? And they do install X or Y and here you guys are like, shit, you know?
Probably a performance type bond might be, uh, useful in that case.
Yeah, or, or, you know, if there's a remedy, then it's a fair.
This all has to be set up beforehand.
Yeah, you just say like, if you don't follow, if you, if you get a permit and you don't follow the flexible zoning rules, then.
Yeah.
Better apartment. I, I don't know that you need two cars for every one better apartment or condo. Um, and I don't think you need in downtown, or what I would do, I think, you know, you can certainly look to Willow Street as an example, um, that I think. that I think is well covered and you know, does.
That might be, the space need to be provided because what if a lot of people live in the downtown and then work out of town?
There's two things, right? There's, there's the requirements and then there's the market, right? And developers are pretty good at making sure that their tenants have what they need to live there, right? Single people. And they're just not going to have two cars, right?
Understand. I hadn't thought of it that way.
Hamilton's gonna have a parking crunch, right?
Yeah, we're doing a party study even as we speak.
Yeah.
And to that point, this, so it's something that, that, you know, we should look at, but, you know, we specifically excluded the business district.
So that it's not spilling out into the street more. I think I agree with the suggestion that an exemption needs to be made for the already dense areas because there's already.
About smaller parcels, as I was thinking, you know, greenfield development when I was reading it, but now, so I won't send you any further thoughts later.
Right, and re- read it, looking at that too, right? And what effect that would have in your mind?
Yeah, I think assemblages, I think everything Tom said, I second for sure.
So far, is, is do the density bonuses and provisions provide sufficient incentive for a perspective, because we want to avoid writing a bylaw that is so restraining and prescriptive that it makes it unusable and uneconomic to.
Yes, I'll think about this. If it was passed as it is here today, I'd be out in the RA district buying up houses because there's plenty of economics, maybe middle's okay, but I think you should allow assemblages everywhere. And I think in the, in the small, a one A district, encourage assemblages and no open space in those little tiny.
Eliminate that requirement.
Eliminate that or eliminate that bonus inside of homes that you're looking for. I remember Clint Richards preamble when we're trying to get set up here and his wife's in a different place because she wants to be on one in law domicile. And I think, I just don't think that every house in the RA district should immediately get.
Bit of humor here. I have to tell my wife that you used her as an example because she can't be bothered at all with town politics and government stuff.
Okay, Tom, that was, that was helpful. Any, Peter or Dave, any thoughts on?
Does that seem right?
So tell them more.
Yeah, what do you mean?
Well, so take the third example to do four N's, but you could do a small subdivision. So, you know, maybe you get four lots out of that. So I take seventeen minus the four you'd get converted with forty six thousand or vice versa. That seems like a, that's, that seems like a fairly attractive acquisition cost.
Yeah, once you tip in one.
Forty six thousand and one.
Trying to encourage diversity and development, and I think those are both reasonable goals. And I actually think it's worthwhile, though, is every poor top lot all of a sudden a candidate?
No, yes, absolutely.
It is?
Oh, well.
And you would get, depending on what zone it was in, a non-trivial bonus.
Yeah, good point.
Oh.
I'm gonna lose my membership in the development club by the time.
You know, I, for a single family lot, right? It's three, three fifty, four hundred, I don't even know, because I don't, I don't do that stuff. But, you know, if somebody said in the buy, you buy as many as you can. So, I mean, that's where you think you might, you know, start to see some real action under this bylaw. Think you want to build in a mechanism to change the fees, right? In the sense of whether it's an escalator that goes up with CPA or something, I mean, you know, adjust to the passage of time, right?
So if you had to pay a hundred dollars per door.
And.
Yes, yes, it's buried in there, but eight point one point.
So I don't know, Peter, if, I don't know, Peter, if you built that.
Over which you'd have to do some affordable.
Yeah, yeah. And that, depending on what happens at Gordon Theological Seminary, may.
But we, we might have, we might have narrowed this economic discussion too far, too fast. Because the piece that's square feet, you're gonna have some seniors who pay the taxes, don't even get their road plowed because the road will be private and don't have any kids in this, so based on the fifty thousand dollar open space fee.
So what you're saying is that we should be thinking about the societal benefits as opposed to just. Right, well, no, actually, that was part of the motivation and it's certainly being driven by me is that override territory for our expenses are outrunning our revenues. So one of the, as you read in the preamble than we are now.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I don't, I don't think you want to, right? And you want people to do and be thoughtful about design, right? You'll have design review, right? And spend money on the facade, maybe, whether that, I gotta, you know.
And there are other benefits based on contributing to one open space fund. I mean, so the town has the ability to take the tax. Other problem we're trying to address here is, as people age, there just aren't any housing options. That's another thing we're trying to address.
One up in hand over one in Auburn and one in North Reading. And national, all more national developers and they, minus your forty five means there's like, you gotta be buying the land for thirty five a door. Which, you know, now makes me think that maybe the forty five is pushing it.
Peter, I got a question because I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is they buy, buy the land plus the cost of doing the physical development is eighty thousand dollars a door? Or something like that?
The, just that their, their raw land cost was, call it eighty thousand dollars a door and that, that's, that's on the high end. Let's use it as an example. In town with a house on it, hopefully I don't have to move that house to take advantage of parcel. But that probably, you know, that two acre parcel, I paid probably a million two for that house. Is that? That, that two acre lot, I ended up getting, ended up getting nine units. So I paid a million, I paid a million two fifty. I paid a million.
Most likely it's right in the middle of the lot and this whole thing is gonna reduce the value of that house to nothing. And you'll wind up scraping.
The house and put more units in it?
Let's just assume it's a single family because that's where most are. So, sorry, Peter, go ahead. No, to get nine units. If we can take advantage of it, now we're, let's say, you know, let's attribute half of the million dollar purchase price to the house. So a little, just a little bit aggressive.
So how would you compensate for that? So we either increase the density or lower the fee.
Or how do you view that if it didn't become a requirement of the project if balanced off by some of the other categories? Because as is, you can go through the matrix without addressing any of the categories, just pay your fine, your fee and gain your density. But if we adjusted such that if you met all other criteria, you'd either waive the fee or reduce it.
You got a question for me?
Sort of, yeah, for the group. Like if we're just too high requiring the fee, the fee or the categories against each other, so meet all categories. I don't have anything against B, C, D, any. Or pay the fee, factors on the matrix play into your thinking of costs in development. Are they hired to address better water usage? Are they hired to, you know, address some of the other standards in that matrix? Or is it strictly about the fee and those standards are easily met in typical construction costs?
I mean, that's the challenge of fees is that they can move and the fees don't, right?
Or in cost effective ways rather than straight up fees.
I mean, it's hard to know. I mean, like, I don't know, fifteen hundred square foot unit, I don't know if that's marketable, right? And this, you know. I'm sorry?
In law requirement, that's what it is.
Right, so it's not gonna necessarily get you, you know, the highest, you know, could be, could be costly, right? Beyond just.
Well, that's a, so you make a good point. We get into the, to encourage rather than, you know, two thousand, twenty five hundred square foot. If that's doable, if there's a market or is there, is that number too small, a unit? That, does that density bonus not encourage that size unit or is that size unit just not marketable? Is there a demand for that size unit that would have?
Willow Street, we're all under fifteen hundred. The market.
Right. So you're comfortable with that, but I don't, Tom and Peter may not be, because that's not a size or market that they.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a totally different product.
Yeah. So I'm, it's gonna, I'm gonna put this at, at, at Tom and Peter, given the Hamilton market, is that, is that type of unit unrealistic?
Just have a bill one. I, I don't know that I'm, I'm the right guy to ask. I do believe that that there is a market need, senior housing one floor.
We already have in-law apartment bylaws.
Accessory apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So Peter, any thoughts on that?
I, I think there is a market in the multifamily stuff we've done, you know, over the past few years, there's, you know, you can.
Unit type of scenario.
Not gonna be, this is not gonna be standalone, these are gonna be attached.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Be flats.
Yep.
You know, in living areas, at gross area, you know, move the attic in the basement or not. I would encourage a, you know, make it something like heated living area.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. That's helpful.
I would, I would echo what's been, eight point one point five. I think as you're trying to sell this locally, I'm not sure you're gonna see too many projects that approach fifty units. So if you wanted to make that twenty five, you might, you might make it more saleable in town and not actually lose any projects to it. And Tom, I don't know, you may have a better sense of that.
No, I would agree with that. I, I'm I'm more of the mind that the planning board has to roll back from the, the, this matrix and decide what they're looking for. Are you looking for developers' expertise to do a ten or fifteen lot thing? Are you looking to be, I, I believe this is a possibility, deluged with people who already live in town, who you, you know, maybe friends and neighbors and stuff, who want to take and double their density overnight. I really think you have to think about that eventuality and how hard it will be, how difficult it will be to say, no, this isn't really what we had in mind. I think the minimum area for development should be at least three times or two and a half times the the, the acreage that is in the underlying zone. So if you have a two acre lot, you can't bring this double density thing unless you get it up to five. Because your ability to do something interesting and contextual and on a two acre lot that overnight became, you know, a two lot subdivision with no boundaries and no requirements. I think you're opening Pandora's box on that one.
Okay, so what I.
Tom, so you're afraid that people will try and shoehorn in second houses because they, they can buy their way into that. And that the end result will be awkward for the town. And that by having a minimum lot size of something like five acres, what we're really saying is this is designed to be used with larger pieces of land that's currently vacant that people are going to develop. Our, our assemblages, I just think you need real developers because any person that reads this bylaw might come to the conclusion, I have a two acre lot, I have a daughter, wouldn't she like a free house lot?
Okay.
But don't make it an arbitrary five acres, make it relative to the underlying district.
Exactly.
So I want to capture that number. So you said two to three times the underlying density of that.
Yeah, that would be the minimum parcel size.
Right, right.
For which this law would be eligible.
No, I, I wanted to get the multiplier that you were referring to. So two to three times the size.
Bill and Rick, this is a conversation. This is my sense of what would happen. Maybe, maybe reasonable people can disagree on this, but I think it's very hard to dangle that out in front of everybody. It's not like this bylaw is gonna be, you know, posited away anywhere. Everybody that reads it will say, I could do this.
Oh, I get it. These are all very good comments. We're trying to make it workable but not go crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it is a special permit, so they could all be denied, but I, I agree that this should be more hardcoded.
Yeah. You don't want people to go through it and then go, oh, we don't like it. They've already spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on design.
Let's, let's take the proverbial two steps back. Let's, you know, understand that we've got to get it approved by town meeting first. That is the litmus test by which the public we serve, that we're shooting at. And I think, you know, I would ask, you know, Tom, Peter, Dave, all three of you guys have, you've done, you know, substantial developments or in the process of it here in town. What are your thoughts about, you know, that part of this journey? Because it's not easy.
That part of what journey? Yeah.
Of getting, you know, in order to get this, this, you know, mechanism for flexible development underway, we have to get it approved by town meeting. And selling this to town meeting members is a, a, a major deal. And the big issue that we have had here to fore, or a big one, has been density. We went through a, a fairly involved housing master planning discussion a year of two to one year ago. And through that whole process, you know, what we were the public, you know, through a lot of shuts, a lot of sit down meetings, a lot of discussions was basically to alter our density thoughts of, you know, what it is that we're trying to shoot for. But we do need to change our zoning. So that can make it worthwhile for a developer, but first and foremost, we have to have a town meeting to prove the overall.
Like this bylaw really reads as a greenfield development sort of subdivision bylaw. And, and so I think, you know, one thing I'm thinking is it sort of blanketly applies to almost everybody who lives in town. And this gets to your town, we want development to happen, right? And sort of drive it more in that, in those geographies so that people don't feel like, oh, my gosh, this is gonna change the face of my neighborhood, right? Because I think if you're gonna, if, I just imagine in our town meeting, you would have to put together a lot of visuals to go along with this bylaw to say, here's a prototypical example of, you know, this type of parcel. And here's how it would happen. And here's a prototypical, you'd have to put clear visuals so that people see, okay, that looks like my lot and this is what would happen, or that looks like my neighbor's lot and this is what would happen. You know, I think people are gonna feel like, oh, my gosh, this is gonna affect me and I'm just gonna reject it because, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen. Whereas if you're putting a bylaw around, you know, a business district, right? Or a certain intersection or something, right? There, there's sort of a feeling like, okay, I, I can see that and I, it's more manageable. And so that's just sort of like an overarching comment. I don't, I, I think this bylaw could be very workable from a developer standpoint. I, I don't know that I would be that developer as it's written now, right? Because it, it, it doesn't quite yet speak to, in my mind, and I have to maybe spend more time with it, multifamily with retail, you know, urban infill multifamily, you know, concentrated, right? Sort of development. Speaks more to carving up house lots and putting townhouses, right? Or concentrating the development on one portion of the lot so that you can do the conservation on the rest. That's what it speaks to.
Exactly.
I don't really do that kind of development, so maybe it's a whole nether sort of bylaw that thinks about sort of downtown multifamily development is separate, right? And I, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Good comments. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, appreciate it, Dave. Yeah, good luck. I'm, 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 I'm on the planning board in my town and I'm fascinated by this, so let's keep comparing notes.
This may cost you, you realize.
No, I'm happy to come back and figure.
That's not what I meant.
No, I know.
All right, thank you.
Anyways, take care of this.
Yeah.
I wonder if one, in listening to Dave there, I wonder if one thing you could do would be to ramp up, you know, for instance, the, the, the minimum percentage of open space as your parcels get bigger or as your zones get, you know, larger lot, minimum lot size. So that you may still be able to do the same density on that ten acre RA parcel. But you've really, you gotta squeeze, you gotta squeeze them in and make them, make them tight and preserve a greater percentage of open space. but you've really, you gotta squeeze the, you gotta squeeze them in and make them, make them tight and preserve a greater percentage of open space. Might help, might help assuage some people's concerns about what's going to happen next door in the flavor of the neighborhood.
Sure.
I, 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 I agree with that, but I do believe that comes out better during the, you know, approval process when all the neighbors are there and the piece that abuts, you know, of the forest land is, uh, i- i- is not impacted, but the side lots up against the houses is, is, you know, sanctising, can't be touched. But one of the things that you said, Peter, earlier stuck in my mind, and Patrick, this is where I'd go having sat on the town meeting floor, the first two numbers people are going to gravitate to are a hundred and fifty. So I might say initially, we're only going to propose to do this on fifty house lots and the maximum sized development we're going to entertain is, you pick twenty-five lots. Because that's where people's eyes go, how big is it? And they're going to presuppose that the limit is the project that will come in, into town to be acted upon. That's, that's my sense anyway.
Yep, no, that's a fair point.
You know, a lot of people will read this bylaw for the first time on town meeting floor. And there's two hundred people voting and a hundred of, a hundred and fifty of them have never seen it before. They're not listening, they're reading and they see the hundred number and the fifty and, and it's dead.
Right. I mean, senior housing got through with fifty. But it took three times, so.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And, and I don't know if it, if, if, if it helps someone to say, look, senior housing's been around for twelve years. It was passed with these exact same limits. You know, that may help some people.
Yeah, people that are listening, yeah.
Hey, okay. Can I make a couple other nits and gnats?
Yes.
Um, eight, eight point one point ten, the minimum distance between projects, you know, and I know this is an effort to make the thing palatable at town meeting, but think about what a third of a mile between projects does, you know, downtown. Um, you're not, you're not going to get this used very much if, if they've got to be, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand feet apart. Um, I, I would encourage you to rethink that one or get rid.
And I think that would come into play if, if we were to reduce the maximum number per, per development, then we could reduce that number much easier.
Mm-hmm.
That was again from senior housing.
This is, uh, this, this next one is an old wound, but location of wastewater treatment. Um, if you've got a parcel that's in two towns, to allow you, to allow the wastewater treatment to be, um, handled offsite, um, might be something you want to consider. I don't see any, I don't see any reason not to, uh, but it, it, it doesn't, and it doesn't say which way it is. I just know the way the town has ruled once before.
What happened once before, please, Peter?
Yeah, what do you mean offsite? I mean, you would.
We, we tried to, we tried, we proposed a project that was on the town line and we wanted to, um, we wanted to do some cluster housing or something. I figured exactly what it was in Hamilton and have the wastewater happen in Wenham and, or actually it was vice versa. Um, anyway, we were, it, 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 it came up and the location of the wastewater relative to the location of the homes, um, it wasn't possible.
Yeah, how long ago was that?
About twelve years ago.
Yeah.
For my time is the answer, yeah.
Um, it's a nit. The, I agree with the parking comments that Dave made, um, disturbance of open space, when I reread it a minute ago, you know, you, it, to the maximum extent feasible. So you do, there is some wiggle room there, but for open space, you know, there are things you may have to build on that open space or use it. So give yourself that flexibility. And I would count land as septic systems towards, maybe there's a couple of categories of open space, but again, you know, there's nothing wrong with green space, you know, playing fields, you're playing space, that kind of thing. Those were my nits.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. How does everybody feel about a comment Tom made earlier about, you know, on, on a smaller parcel closer to downtown, not having any open space?
That might make sense.
Perfect instance where you have the ability to tag that development with the acquisition of open space somewhere else, wherever it's usable, attractive and workable.
Right, and it, can we still give the bonus if they do tag another parcel, right?
That was my, my problem before. I can't find that in the table and I don't know how me supplying open space or buying open space. In addition to the, you know, the fees that are going to open space can be factored in, but they should be.
Yep, okay. Yeah, that was just, yeah, clarification on my, my part, okay.
Well, we need to.
I feel like that's definitely something we discussed over the summer and then got wired into the matrix in the, in the late fall here, so yeah.
You're right, we did, because there was Tom's comment a while back as well. Yeah, it was just how to, how to integrate it. Okay. Anything else?
I have one more thing to say, then I'm going to sign off. I want to commend you on this. The comments I think are interesting and there were some, I kind of think there were some massaging into the bylaw that's in front of me. But I admire you guys for taking on this. This is a tough one. And, and it's a tough one to, uh, to get passed. So I want to encourage you to, to make it palatable and get something passed because you can always, can always come back with a bigger project later, I think. And I do believe that diversity, my wife's the chair of the Capitol, uh, uh, Marash, and this, without some new developments and some new real estate, I don't know where else it would come from, you know? We're not going to let all the teachers off, you know? So I, I really hope you can find a way to put it in front of town meeting floor and let what happened, happen.
Great, thanks for your comments, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Tom. Thanks, Tom.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Hey, guys, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good.
Were we?
Comments from anyone before we move on?
Thought that was very helpful.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, Larry Smith is, uh, scheduled to provide his comments to us, uh, at our next meeting, which is, uh, on the sixteen.
Great.
Um, any other comments from the board before we move on?
Yeah, just, um, it, um, or is somebody taking minutes, Patrick?
Uh, this is being recorded and Schlecht will be transcribing those.
What would be helpful in the minutes is if she could, um, maybe put the comments in bullet form. I mean, I've written down probably twelve to fifteen specific comments. So it'd be nice to capture those, you know, about assembling lots, you know, pretty much that kind of thing, just sort of, they don't have to be long descriptive sentences, but recommendations were, you know, be specific about energy and water standards and how you measure them and define them, you know, that kind of thing, so that we have that in front of us, so as we can then accumulate. Larry Smith may have the same comments or he may have different, but I'd like to have a, um, a list, sort of final list.
Having the minutes being, um, a little more detailed than, than what we've had in the past, so it may take her a little while to, to get the gist of what people have been saying and, and, and like Rick, I've been taking notes, but it, it seems that there was a shift. You know, we initially talked about the eighty thousand square foot minimum lot size and then all of a sudden that, that's evolved, you know, to, from particularly Tom Ford's comments. And what I see is, um, kind of an issue between how development might look in the R A district and, and how it would look uh, downtown in the R one A district. And I think that in some respects, there's a bit of incompatibility with how this, uh, bylaw, um, will affect those districts and how to actually draft it to, to a- address the, the different geographies. And I think that's what Dave Tagorth was saying, there are different geographies here. And will one bylaw really address, you know, the downtown, which is already, you know, uh, the Willow Street overlay district and the business district, so that there's, you know, a part of the downtown that's not covered by that. But it's so different than, than the other districts. So I just throw that out, you know, as a consideration. And I think the comments kind of pointed to that as well. I don't know if anybody agrees with me on that.
Yeah, I mean, abs- absolutely. And I think Tom's, um, thought of the multiplier on the base, um, you know, twenty thousand, forty thousand or eighty thousand, whatever it is, is, is better than just the minimum lots, minimum lot size.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you're right, you're going to get, you're going to get something different, most likely, downtown in R one A than you are in RA.
Yeah, yep.
That's just, you know, most likely.
It seems moreover, I mean, we've discussed the R one A in our districts being, you know, they're dense as it is and there's less lot sizes, but downtown that we, we must set to the side. Um, so it felt like the discussion was either leave it as exempt for other bylaws to be utilized or write in exemptions to our own bylaw for downtown, right?
Well, are you talking business when you say downtown, business?
Yeah, I guess I am, yeah.
Well, the business district is excluded, you know, specifically excluded.
Right, we've ignored it.
I don't think we need to include it in this bylaw because we have it covered with two others.
Right. Well, downtown versus business is what, like an extra block and in a direction here and there. It's not much bigger, to my knowledge.
I mean, the business district is pretty small, as we know. It's, you know, one side of Willow over to one A and you know, from Asbury to Linden. I mean, it's not a lot of area, but you know, quote unquote, the village or what some say downtown is, you know, the southern side of As-, well, both sides of Asbury to a point, you know, down to like Highland even. Some people say that's downtown for the village, right?
Yeah, it's, it's R, it's R A, right, so.
R one.
So anyway, R one A, sorry.
R one A, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for the most part, I think.
Cool.
Um, so I mean, yeah, some would say it's a little bit tighter than that or closer to the town than that. And yeah, there's, there's, there's not, there's not very many lots, as Tom said, that could, you know, meet even, you know, one or two acre parcel size without combining, you know, lots. I mean, that, that was one that came in right off the bat and I was just curious about everybody's reaction to that, if they think that we should be combining, allow, allow combining lots. And I'm not sure why Wenham's didn't. Because I know that was from the Wenham bylaw, I thought.
I don't see how it can function unless you do allow them to do that.
I, I, well, it, it couldn't in one or two of the zones.
Yeah. And if you want to make it for all zones, it's got to.
That's in a sense encouraging purchasing for neighboring houses and demolishing them for the sake of.
That's a, that's a possibility. I, I understand that.
Yeah, but.
I'm not far against it when I say that. I'm just clarifying the point, right?
Yeah, and that comes back. That, that's one of those scenarios that it'd be great to have somebody run, you know, current prices, you know, buying four or five houses downtown. You know what that looks like and then what you could get out of it.
Well.
I, I don't know how really economic that would be.
Let me go to the assessors database and I'll give you an answer real quick here.
Well, I'm just looking at.
Yeah.
We don't need to do that analysis.
Okay, never mind. Well, I thought it was a fun idea.
I know that, okay, across the street from me is twenty-two Elliott, which recently sold for basically what the price uh, of a empty lot is, and they redeveloped a single family home and sold it for double what they paid for it, so.
Where is, Cory, where is twenty-two Elliott? What was it?
Uh, it's Linden, connect, uh, Elliott connects Linden and Railroad, just past Willow.
In fact, it's parallel to it. House that, uh, was abandoned for quite a while?
Yeah, uh, effectively, yes.
Okay, I know, what is Yellow House? Hmm.
It doesn't matter, but it.
Yeah, I know. But I'm just trying to picture it. That's all I was trying to do.
Yeah, oh.
Oh, can, can we, uh, move on?
Yeah, yeah, you can. Well, I, I wanted to ask, Bob, did you have any comments? I know you've been listening intently and if you have any comments, we'd love to hear them as well.
You're muted.
Muted.
Yes. Well, thank you. I, as you might know, I've been doing this real estate for, since in the eight, well, in the seventies. I've been very encouraged by what I've been hearing in the last year or so. Um, my suggestion after being, as Patrick had mentioned at the last meeting that we had, or two years ago, and great opposition that you need to bring in a number of other leaders in our town, school, I'm thinking of the new human justice committees that are out there, and you, you need a wider impact of input so that we can reach out to a larger part of the town. Most people won't speak other than writing a ballot. But if they hear other people they trust and rely upon advocating what's happening, you can get them on your side or hopefully the right side here. And we can make some progress. Change is so hard, especially with real estate. Been involved with a racial justice issue and getting back into how real estate was this, the in-between lines of how all this, you know, separation came. Um, and it's not easy. It's not going to change overnight. And so we need to make some changes. I think you need to get a larger body. I, I know Tom well. Uh, and his spectrum is in more expensive homes. But I think you need to understand the forty B environment that we're certainly needing to be incorporating. I understand that Gordon Conwell, I've been working with them. But that will be a great change, but I think the whole town needs to start to incorporate this in a broader manner. And I think I would suggest that you look ten years into the future as opposed to just where things are now. Uh, populations are changing. They're talking, I think the class, Patrick, you might share, the school committee was seeing that school population might drop thirty percent because we don't have young kids living in the town. Because they can't afford living in the town. You have a lot of older people who will have to move out because they can't afford to stay in the town. They don't want to, but they have to. Uh, so spectrums are changing and this culture that we have, uh, needs to come to grips with some of this, and this is not easy.
Great, thank you very much. And yeah, absolutely agree about getting different groups of people involved and, and trying to help this along or, or anything along that comes, um, when, when we're talking about, you know, like Rick said earlier, you know, revenue to the town. Um, we are, we're in a mess here, will be very soon, and we, we need support from a lot of different bodies, as you said, school committee, selectmen, obviously, and many others. Um, to be able to get these things through and really to be able to kind of wake people up to what's really going on financially with town, so. Um, all right. Um, do we, do we want to talk anymore about the zoning change, Patrick? Do we have any new info or?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Does anybody have anything on that? I don't, I don't feel a need that we need to talk about tonight?
Not me, so the low.
Okay. Um, minutes from January fifth?
I move to approve the minutes of the planning board for January fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Contacted.
Marnie made the motion. Who, who seconded?
I did.
Richard. Richard. Uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor will do a roll call. Uh, Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, I.
Cory?
Cory, you, I.
Yeah.
And Ham, I.
Rick?
Mitchell, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
And I'm an I as well, Brian. Um, unanimously approved. Um, anything, any reports, Patrick?
Um, let me ask a, a question relative to the, uh, the bylaw language that, uh, we've. Let me ask a question relative to the, the bylaw language that we've been talking about. Do you think that we're ready to have town council give it a look through?
No.
Not yet.
Okay.
I think there's a number of changes we need to make, potentially based on comments tonight, and be interested to hear Larry's take on. I'm sure he'll have some of the same. But yeah, I think there's a number of things we need to kind of hash out and work through and have, you know, go back to the matrix and, and work through that some more as well.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And, and really, at a high level, just see what we want to change to potentially make it work better and how it's going to affect every zone. I don't want to say equally, but how is it balanced between all those zones?
Right. How is it definitively balanced, I think is, you know, the question.
Or does it need to be? Because Tragorth made a good point about like, is this a bylaw to promote what he kept calling greenfield development or urban infill? Do we have a stance on that or not?
I think, I think Cory, that's the exact point I made, you know, it's how to meld kind of two divergent development models, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll say, because it's probably for a longer conversation, is that the more Tragorth talked or spoke rather, I appreciate all of his comments, but I don't necessarily see a fully developed downtown Hamilton as being a very walkable place. And so seeing how that development centralized around the train, how useful that becomes or how attractive it becomes without a larger sort of master plan development of our roadways and pedestrian use throughout.
And I don't think we're going to do a lot of development downtown. I don't, I just don't see the space there.
Well, and and again, the, the septic, you know, the room, right? It's, you're, you're not going to have anything that's, that's any more dense than what Willow Street's going to be.
I mean, I guess unless we make a change with Winthrop, right, there's not really a
Right.
a large parcel.
Yeah, that and you know, the, the end of Willow and Asbury there, that's, that's really what you're looking at, is, again, way down the road.
Talking about the tree place and.
Yeah, that corner, that whole corner. Okay. Patrick, anything else, or? We good?
That's it for me.
Great. Anything else from anyone?
Not me.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Rick made the motion, Richard seconds. All those in favor, again, roll call, Rick?
Rick Mitchell, aye.
Dan? Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Cory?
Cory, you, aye.
Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, aye.
And Brian's an aye as well. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Patrick.